I'm Dean Valone, I'm the president of the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners. I'm calling this regular meeting of the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners of April 8th, 2024 to order. Proof of publication is available for our meeting. We begin our meetings with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. So we'll begin with a prayer. We pray this day to give thanks for all the many blessings bestowed upon our township. Watch over us who are entrusted with the administration of this township. Create in us the earnest desire to serve faithfully and permit us to experience the joys of noble service completed for our residents. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who serve. Help us to use every willing service and every effort put forth for good government. Heavenly Father, we ask your guidance to help us as commissioners to make the right decisions. And we ask that you aid our staff as they perform the daily tasks of running our township. And we request that you be by our first responders as they protect our residents and see that they return home safe at the end of each day. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, my name is Dean Valone. I'm joined this evening by, to my far left, Commissioner Joseph Schwartz, to my far right, Commissioner Josh Nagy, and to my immediate right, Commissioner Brown, and to my immediate left, Vice President Jennifer Karen. I'm glad to see everybody this evening. Looks like our agenda, we have a pretty full agenda. I think we'll be able to get through it in a timely manner and efficiently. Before we move on to approving our meeting minutes, which is the first item on our agenda, I would like to take this moment to recognize commissioners. As if you remember, two weeks ago, our previous meeting, we made the move to appoint and hire Mr. Isaac Sweeney as our Community and Economic Development Director. And today is, I believe, his first day and also his first meeting. So I don't know how often that happens, like an eclipse, like a total. But today's your first day and your first meeting. So welcome, Isaac Sweeney, to Lower Allen Township as one of our directors. And I'm sure at some point later in the evening, I'm sure that the commissioners will want to greet you personally. So, welcome, thank you. Commissioners, in our packets this past week, we've received two sets of meeting minutes. One was from the March 11th, 2024 meeting, and the regular meeting as well of March 25th. And so, do you have any corrections? We'll take each one separately. We'll start with the March 11th, have any discussion or corrections, and then I'd be seeking a motion to approve the March 11th meeting minutes.
Mr. President, if there are no comments or changes, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 11th, 2024.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen, and I have a second from Commissioner Nagy. Is there any discussion on the March 11th meeting minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, are there any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And next, we'd be taking up the March 25th meeting minutes in the same manner.
Mr. President, if there's no additions or subtractions, I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from March 25th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, and I have a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is there any discussion on the March 25th, 2024 minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next on our agenda this evening is where audience participation on agenda items can be. If you'd like to participate on an agenda item, then you let us know now when we get to that agenda item. You would just come up to the podium, state your name and address, and participate on that agenda item. Is there anyone joining us this evening on an agenda item?
Sir, I don't know what your agenda is, but I do have, I'm going to speak about the crescent manor later on.
Absolutely. I believe.
That's under item seven.
Okay, we would take that up under item seven, which essentially is any business pertinent to Lower Allen Township. When we get to that, I'll just have you come to the podium and you can state your name and address, and then carry on with your business with us. You're welcome. Is there anyone else joining us this evening that would like to participate on an agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any commissioner, staff member, or anyone in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion can request so now. Is there a request to have any item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion?
No request, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. We'd just like to highlight 5B, Mr. Ringling. His efforts in training in volunteer positions have been outstanding and seeing a lot of creative ideas and working with our both fire departments. So I just want to commend him for that.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, and I believe my second came from Vice President Karen. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda passes five to zero. Moving on to your president this evening. Be looking to accept a motion to appoint Alicia J. Noel, who is our township treasurer, I'm sorry, as our township finance director, as township treasurer effective April 8th, 2024. I don't know, I could break that time. I'm going to let the motion carry be moved by Commissioner Brown, and the second will be Commissioner Karen, oh, I'm sorry, Vice President Karen will be seconding that motion. Thank you. This is good. Any questions, comments? Oh, yes, yes, sir, we have a second, motion and a second.
Just a question for clarification. What is the actual differentiation in title as director versus title or position of director?
Sure, the manager will be able to explain that as he's explained it to me.
So the treasurer's a position set up by the First Class Township Code, which until last, three years ago, or whatever, four, maybe it's more than that, used to be the tax collector. So tax collector and treasurer, we didn't, Township of the First Class didn't have a tax collector. It had a treasurer who collected taxes. Several years ago, the legislature split those into the tax collector and the treasurer. The treasurer is just, again, it's a statutory position that signs things, some things for the township, you know, as the steward of the money, I guess.
And I believe in the past, the former director was always appointed.
Yeah, Director Grove was our treasurer.
Yes.
Which necessitated this move.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Motion, second still carry? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. I'd be looking to accept the motion on 6B for Resolution 2024 R14, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township appointing Julie A. Etcheling as an accounting specialist in the Finance Department effective April 8th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy and a second from Vice President Karen. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you, commissioners. Moving on, this is any business pertinent to Lower Allen Township. It can be raised at this time. And we have one person joining us this evening thus far that would like to come up to the podium. And you would just state your name and your address, and then please feel free to bring up any business you would like.
Okay. Thank you for this honor. I am Victoria A. Caparala. I live in Mechanicsburg. However, my childhood home and my parents' home is at 900 South 31st Street, Camp Hill, Laura Allen. I was upset, I got the letter, because my parents passed away. My father just passed away in February. And I will be buying the home. My parents bought the, built, bought the land 72 years ago, and he built the house 72 years ago, and we moved in. During that time, the address was South 31st Street. When, and the street signs said south and had that "N" on it. So what happened in between that time and now, I don't know. But it's very upsetting to have these changes made after all these years, especially when it did not come from the federal government, the United States Postal Service. I went over to Camp Hill Borough, because that's where a lot, we had caregivers for over two years for my parents. And a lot of people called and said, "Well, we can't find your address." Well, they were over in the Camp Hill Borough, when we are further south than the Camp Hill Borough. Their addresses over there start at 113 and end at 510 South 31st Street. Ours in Laura Allen start at 900. This means if we had to change everything, it is our expense to our expense of changing all our addresses. On your letter, it says 900 South 31st Street, and you want this done immediately? Well, immediately, I would think that you wouldn't have the "South" on this address. And you would have more respect for your residents and put their names here instead of just residence. Oh, I looked at the deed. It does not say the house number on the deed, but it does say the property about being southwest of Morningside Drive. And I don't know if this was an error years ago or recently, when they made the street signs without the "South" on it or what have you. But, and I would appreciate if I could get some answers here. And from some of the neighbors, people in the neighborhood that I have spoken to, they said they are going to continue with the "South." And also EMS, when you call EMS, a lot of times Laura Allen doesn't come. We've had Hampton Township come, and we had Penn State come. And they have called us and say, "Where are you located?" Oh, and then on the zip code, 1711, we have a four-digit number that is supposed to go directly to your home. So why does it matter? Why can't you just leave "South" on the addresses? Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing this up. I'm sure we'll take it under advisement, but I would ask the township manager, since we did receive a memo on this, to expand a little bit more detail on the memo.
Sure, the issue actually arose because people were having difficulty getting packages, things like that. And because there was some confusion with the "South" numbered streets in Camp Hill Borough, even though the numbering schemes are vastly different. As Mrs. Caparala said, you know, theirs, up there is 100, 200. Ours start down here at 900. So as we started looking into what the differences were, I actually looked up the original dedication documents from 1962, and the streets were dedicated without a directional. So the official names of the streets are 28th, 29th, 30th, and 31st. Regardless of usage prior to that or after that, the official names do not contain the directional. And that is why the street signs don't contain the directional. Because the street signs are made to match the official name of the street, which we have on file. We looked for any additional, anything, legislation, anything in the files that would have at some point, you know, begin the use of the directional. There was nothing in the file for that. So we did send out a letter to the residents. And the reason we use residents is because you turn it around a lot faster than entering 71 actual names. But the intention of the letter was to just let people know that these were being changed. The post office changes does not come from the federal government. The post office actually looks to the local municipality to give them the addresses. So we did let the post office know, we let the county know. The reason that the letters went out with the directional on it is because we're still using the county database. And that, they haven't changed it yet. But they are changing it. And they, you know, if I were to send these letters out three months from now, they would not contain a directional. That's going to be the same thing with the sewer and trash bills that the residents just received. We didn't have time to change those in the system before they went out, so they also received sewer and trash bills with the directional on it. Whether the residents want to change their stationery or letterhead, it makes no difference to me if they're happy using the directional and they continue to get their letters and their parcels and things like that. Good, they can continue using the directional as long as they want. The letter was just an informational thing, saying this is what's happening because the official names of the streets do not contain the directional.
So were we getting, I mean, I understand, we're in those same neighborhoods, people were talking about their packages.
Yeah, it's not mail so much as packages.
Right, because they're probably using GPS and the mapper, I guess, some sort of map, version of the mapper to get around. I understand.
I mean, and one of the people that contacted us, I'm not sure if it was Mrs. Caparala or not, said, "Well, you know, Google's not the be-all and end-all of direction finding, but unfortunately, it's widely used." So, you know, I'm not sure, I didn't even, I didn't look at WAVEs to see what they have. But, but yeah, Google Maps just, you know.
Commissioners, do you have any que, just a moment, Mrs. Caparala. Do you have any questions at this point for the township manager or any other things you'd like to bring up regarding this matter?
I'm just in my mind trying to clarify. So this was in response to solving a problem? Is that what I'm hearing?
It was in response to complaints about not receiving packages.
Okay.
Tom, when you reached out to the Camp Hill Post Office to verify that the, that the "South" directional was not part of the official address, did they, what was the result of that? Did they give that verification, or did they take any?
So I didn't speak to them, the county did. So I'm not sure what that, what conversation took place with them.
And besides reaching out to the county, did you take any additional action with regard to the directional designations for these street addresses?
I'm not sure what additional action you would be referring to. I notified the proper authorities that the roads did not include the directional.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you mentioned that you had reached out to Cumberland County. Besides reaching out to Cumberland County, was there anything else that you had done?
No.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions? Just a moment, Mrs. Caparala. Okay, Mrs. Caparala, at this time, I'm gonna, I know you're anxious to answer a question. I'm gonna give you a little bit more time if you want to just respond to something, but we're gonna move on the agenda shortly thereafter, okay? So you need to come back to the podium, if you will, and then we'll move, we'll move from there, thank you.
Well, when I said my parents bought the land and built the house 72 years ago, that was April the 14th, 1952. So, and it is in the Carlyle Courthouse, and it's on the assessment, and it has "South." I didn't bring a copy of that, but however, I can. So it's in their records. You have to go back 10 more years. We were about the seventh, sixth or seventh house in that development on, in a crescent manor. So it even goes back further than April. Thank you.
So at this time, I'm sure that information will be helpful if there was something missed by our management. But at this time, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Captain Devan, did you have something to add? Okay, moving on our agenda. Is there anyone else joining us this evening that would like to bring up any business pertinent to Lower Allen Township? Seeing none, we'll move on to Community and Economic Development. And Mr. Sweeney? Good, and we received some information on this. Commissioners, any questions?
I mean, I guess I'll ask the same question I think I asked 60 days ago. As noted here, this came before planning commission in March of last year. How long does this keep, kind of getting kicked down the road? Or what is our tolerance for? You know, what do we do in a situation like this where it keeps just turning back and forth?
Well, assuming that you're, you know, that you support development or support that particular development, you just let them carry this forward at their own pace. You know, at some point, if you, you're going to have to, they can, without the extension, you're gonna have to vote on a plan, the way it is.
Or take no action, is my understanding, and then automatically.
It automatically, yeah.
Right.
Am I, Bob, is that correct? I should be letting the attorney answer this.
I mean, I guess more from the standpoint of we've never had a plan, you know, we've had plans that we've extended in the setting of they want to fix a couple of things here and there, and it goes back and it comes back as a better plan. But this is, we're now a year and several months. What is, I don't know any of the details of this plan, or is there something specific they're trying to achieve, or what?
I can tell you, the one thing that's holding it up is a grant application that they've submitted. So, plus, there's other, there's other issues with the turn radiuses. They're dealing with PennDOT, number one, for a road encroachment permit, which could sometimes take a year. This is why our car wash up the street pulled out because, you know, they were looking at potentially waiting a year, working with PennDOT for a year before they get their street encroachment permit. And so, I mean, there could be, I'm not an apologist for the developer here. I'm just, what I've heard them state is why they continue to submit these extensions. And from my point of view, it doesn't make a difference. They can take their time if they want.
Right. My experience with these is that when these come up, and there hasn't been too many that have gone on this long, but we always talk about if we do nothing, then they get the deemed approval. But it is, that approval is still contingent on, let's say, a necessary HOP or any encroachment permits or anything, PennDOT or anything else we would have been requiring in our code, correct?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, they still have to, you know, obey all subdivision and development and zoning ordinances, so they can't skirt any of that. But this one is taking a little longer because of different permits and things.
Mr. President, I just had a quick question about the actual language of the granting of the extension. It just, there's just a discrepancy between, it says, "I grant a 30," and then "60" in parentheses. So I'm assuming the intent was for the 60-day extension. But I think if we make a motion, maybe we should just correct that in the motion.
Can you bring it up, Mr. Solicitor? Or should we get the solicitor a hard copy?
Yeah, I should. Okay. I'm assuming it's just a typo that both should read 60 since that's what's on the agenda, but just wanted to confirm that. Okay. I'm happy to make a motion if there's no other questions from my colleagues to accept the 60-day extension for the final subdivision and land development plan for the Cedar Run Business Park.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen, and I have a second from Commissioner Brown. So we would just open up additional discussion if anyone has any at that time. Commissioner Schwartz?
I think I'd be fine with granting a 60-day. It really just gives us an additional 60 days, if you think about it, to make a decision. So as far as I understand, that's where we're at. So, and I think as far as we can tell, there isn't a reason we would want to sort of hold their feet to the fire at this point. So I'd be okay with an additional 60 days as opposed to 30. I don't think we need to.
Did I?
No, you were correct. They didn't ask for 30, they asked for 60.
But my motion said 60, right?
Yeah, your motion is correct.
The motion, the motion did state 60.
Yes, I know, I just wanted to.
That's okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any further discussion, questions, or comments on the motion?
I didn't think you did. I wasn't disagreeing with you, sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Moving on to our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items on the agenda for discussion and possible action. The first item would be an approval of a payment to Schumong Supply in the amount of $23,450 for stormwater infrastructure for our 2024 infrastructure and paving project. These materials are being purchased through the CAPCOG fitting process. The board previously awarded the project to Kinsley, and now we're purchasing the materials for that portion of Highland State where we're replacing the stormwater infrastructure.
Great. Commissioners, we have this up for discussion and possible action, so we can have some discussion now if you have any questions or comments. Director, the, this is all, just fits right into the stormwater budget and mold.
Correct, we budgeted. Correct. We budgeted, put my one hundred and twenty-five thousand for materials, so this definitely falls into the budgeted expenditure.
Great. And how's that fund look at this point? Pretty, is it solid?
Good. Good.
Thanks. All right.
The work looks great so far, so, sorry.
For the payment of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars to Schumong Supply for 2024 stormwater infrastructure and paving project.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy and a second from Commissioner Brown. Is there any further questions or comments? Mr. Schwartz?
I was only saying the work looks great so far, from what I can see.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The next item I have for discussion and possible action, this would be to authorize staff to prepare and advertise bids for our Lower Allen Community Park paving project. We intended on performing this work last year, ran out of time for bidding due to paving timing, so we're back again to request permission to prepare and solicit bids. I did provide a map in your packet that shows the areas that we are intending to place in the bid, and there will be options in the bid to remove sections if the pricing comes in higher than anticipated, so we will word the bid that way so you can remove certain sections. But I'll entertain any questions you may have about this.
Director Davis, did...
Yes.
Were some of these areas on here, were these, refresh my memory, they were slated to be done last year and kind of got put on hold with purchase of the...
All areas, correct, Commissioner Brown. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
All areas except for the driveway and the front portion of the park, that is our access road, and it is severely degraded, so we added, after we went out and assessed the site, we added that section to the bidding.
And this was kind of the trade-off from the tractor?
Correct.
And the old tractor has been...
The mower.
Mower has been sold and...
Correct.
Okay.
The only question I had, and I can't really recall how many, if there are, it's like speed bump type things that are on these roads, are there anything that we're going to be adding after they repave them?
Not at this time.
Okay. So there's no grading down?
There are some bump, speed bumps...
There are some there.
On the access drive, further down.
Further down.
Further down on the entry, entrance drive, excuse me.
Great. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, I just had a question, too. So just in terms of the timing, and maybe you talked about this already, but when would the paving be completed for these, based on the bidding schedule? Would it be done before the end of the year?
Yes. Yes, we would have to be done by October thirty-first.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Right. So the question before us, if somebody were to make a motion, is on particularly just giving staff authorization to prepare and authorize, or advertise the bids to come in, at which time we would have a bid opening, I assume?
Correct.
In public.
I'm happy to make that motion to authorize staff to prepare and advertise bids for the Lower Allen Community Park paving project.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen, and I have a second from Commissioner Brown. Is there any further discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? This motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Is there, moving on to the Township Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda there has to do with food processing residuals. As we were notified at the end of February that there had been discussions at the municipal advisory board meetings regarding these, this practice, for those that are unsure what this is, this is where they take parts from the processing of animal food, not animal food, human food out of animals, and put it through a process whereby it's applied to the land. We have that problem here in Lower Allen, out there at the Leshur Farm, the undeveloped portions of it has been treated this way for years, and when it happens, we get a lot of complaints from people about the odor. So when I read Mr. Stoner's email about the South Middleton Township had asked the county if they would work with them to sort of do an intermunicipal effort to look into Pennsylvania law regarding FPRs, I had reached out to them to ask them what the deal was, like, you know, how would we participate if we wanted to. They sent the scope of services and the intermunicipal agreement, which I included in your packets, and I said, well, we would discuss it, I'd put it on the agenda for discussion on the eighth, see what the board was interested in doing in that effort, and then I'd get back to them after that.
Commissioners?
I'd definitely be interested in learning more about this. This was something that I was opposed to several years ago. You know, we try to put the best titles we can for what we're doing, but this is waste farming. We're taking, you know, ground-up animal parts that are left over from food processing, and we're applying them to the ground, and it's not fertilizer, does not benefit the ground. It's proteins, they don't break down. It's not like we're adding nitrates or nitrogen that'll help crops grow for the future. This is destroying the land, and it smells like a rotting corpse, because that's what it is. I mean, there's no easy way of putting it, but it's waste farming, and it's become very profitable, and it's very profitable because every state south of Pennsylvania, I believe up to this point, has outlawed it, because they recognize the dangers of it, what it's doing to the groundwater, and what it's doing to the land for several generations to come. I would want to make sure we're doing things responsibly, and so I read through what's in our packet, but I would definitely be interested in learning more information about the process of this.
So, Tom, are you looking for any sort of direction from us, or just that finding out what more information we would want?
I guess the question that's gonna come to you eventually is, do you want to participate? That's kind of what Corey Adams from South Middleton is looking for, is like, who, which municipalities want to participate, which would include sharing a part of the fee of Salzman Use, the law firm that was contacted to add this up. So if the board, you know, one way you look at it, yes, we could be part of this and go forward and outpay the legal fees, but the other way to look at it is, if they are successful, and at all, in overturning Pennsylvania's laws, we're still gonna benefit from it without paying anything. So that's really the issue. From my understanding is, there's three municipalities around the Carlisle Borough area which are participating, along with, that would include South Middleton.
Yeah, I know South Middleton and Dickinson have hundreds of acres that are impacted by this, and a lot of residents that are impacted by this, and if you've ever been at any establishment out there for longer than a half hour, when I come home, I mean, my wife won't let me in, your clothes smell like it, I could not imagine. We fortunately, we have a twenty cup acre property that does this a couple of times a year, so again, some of the information I'd be interested in is obviously, you know, if we have twenty acres that are a couple of times a year, and they have hundreds of acres that are, you know, a hundred days a year, we would probably want a much less sharing of the cost.
Sure.
Not only that, but I mean, any money we spend on something like this, in my view, I mean, what value are we really showing our residents, or giving our residents, and I think that value would be, is there really a problem? And when I say that, are we really, I mean, what do the, what does the complaints look like? And how often, and what does it really smell like? Because I don't really recall smelling...
It smells like rotting corpses.
No, I'm saying, I don't recall smelling, but I'm sure I probably have smelled a bad odor, maybe that's what it was, if the wind was blowing bad, but I don't really know, do the complaints come in often, when they do this, twice a year?
What, they don't, it's not twice a year, in fact, it's not even every year. It's about every two years they do this, and this year was odd. They did apply the FPRs this year, but we, I got maybe one complaint, but I remember two years ago, the phone rang constantly all day long, people were complaining about it. So I guess it really kind of depends on, you know, which way the wind's blowing and how much they're putting down, because, yeah, I remember two years ago, there was a lot of complaints from, you know, the Shefrid Crossing residents, other residents out along that area. I thought we would get even more complaints now, because you have Meridian that's full, Arcona that's well-built out, I mean, getting there anyway. I thought we would just, I was preparing staff for hundreds of calls, but we really didn't get that many, so...
And then my other question is, again, looking at the value, it sounds like the real big problems are gonna be on the real big pieces of property where this is happening, and it would, I would think that when this got to, you know, courts in any capacity, even, I would have to think that they're gonna weigh those big areas and where it's really impacting people more regularly in a bigger area. And so I would, I don't know, I guess I hesitate to put money at something that if it goes through, we benefit, and I don't think we would have a lot of influence of whether that decision is in favor of getting rid of these or not. So I would really be cautious about spending any money. I'm not seeing the value in this unless there's a major, major problem going on in Lower Allen that we're hearing all the time. That would be my, and again, maybe I'm misunderstanding, you know, how much money we would be invested in the now and into the future, but it doesn't seem like there's much value here for us.
It's also, what I would say is that, you know, what this is doing is, when we talk about value, if we had a one-acre site that was disposing hazardous chemicals into the ground, and Dickinson Township had a hundred-acre site disposing hazardous chemicals, those are still doing those residents harm, and this is causing irreparable damages to the water, the groundwater system, which is feeding the yellow breeches, which a lot of our residents use for recreation, and the science is coming in, you know, with what they're putting in, it's just not regulated, and we're now seeing the PFOS and all that coming to light, and they're trying to track correlations, but this is so new in terms of Pennsylvania, but this has risen to the level in which every state south of here has banned it.
I'm not disagreeing with any of that, but I'm relating this similar as far as the process and our involvement with the tolling issue that we took up. And so for me, we found value there. In fact, we were willing to spend more, I think, than, maybe at one point in there than we would have been asked to, because of, we did some due diligence on our own and found out our residents are gonna be traveling that, and there's value in making sure that we are fighting that, but we would have influence on that decision, I think, by joining that lawsuit, and I think a lot of municipalities around us joined, maybe because, or got more involved in that lawsuit, because we were involved. In this, I don't think we're making a difference in the outcome, or whether or not this even moves in a meaningful way to get rid of it. That's all I'm saying, Commissioner. I'm not opposing at all that there's a problem.
The economics of it, to what, if there's no good data, or why are farmers doing this? I think I would need more...
Money. They make a lot of money.
Just to dispose...
Yeah, to the point where I know in Dickinson Township, they no longer farm the ground, because when you put this on the ground for long enough, you're destroying it, so, but there is a lot of money in it, because the landfilling rates in the south, because otherwise they gotta landfill this, right? And it is so expensive that they truck it to us for a reason, because these, when you, you're talking twenty-five-ton tractor and trailer loads, and if they're taking, you know, ten of them a day, I mean, when you start doing the math, at seventy dollars a ton versus landfilling it at a hundred and sixty-five dollars a ton, they're saving money, but these farmers are making way more money than they would off of growing corn at two dollars a bushel, whatever it's selling for, so they make a tremendous amount of money.
I guess I would, regardless of the poor practice that this may be, I think I have to second President Bollone's concerns. You know, if I try to look a resident in the eye and say we're spending money wisely, there's nine entire pages of how we will spend money with the law firm, and I don't know that I, in good conscience, can be a part of that, regardless of whether or not this is a poor practice, but there's already efforts underway to ban, or hopefully ban.
Yeah, I think, oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna say, I mean, I think I would like more information on it, just so I had a better understanding of not only the impact that this practice has on our residents, I know we were sort of talking about some statistics, but I think I would just like to get a better handle on what it means for our residents, and then in comparison to that, you know, what would our allocated portion of cost be? I mean, it doesn't make any sense that we would be contributing anywhere near on the same monetary level as the other townships involved, so I guess that would be the second question, is, you know, to what extent would we be financially responsible to participate?
The way the intermunicipal agreement is written right now, it's ten thousand per participating municipality.
Well, but then it's, I think that's the initial contribution to the fund...
Correct.
But then you're charged on a, you know, basically, it looks like, another provision of the agreement says that there would be adjusted on a proportional contribution amount if it needs replenished, but, yeah, to contribute ten thousand dollars on equal footing as the other townships doesn't really seem...
You know, and regardless of my opinion on it, kind of a question coming back to, similar to the tolling lawsuit, there was a, what do we do once we're in it? How do, you know, do we get to opt out once we've put our fee in, or are we on the hook for continued fees, or...
There's, yeah, there are opt-out provisions in there.
Yeah, I think just to start, I would just like more information on how this problem impacts our township.
Sure. I just wanted to highlight, this had been mentioned previously, and in looking into the issue, I noticed there was a manual put out by DEP on managing food processed residuals. So I think that we, in considering these things, I think that we should also look at that and see what the Commonwealth has done in the past. There might be, we may, that might help inform us as to what we could do on our own, perhaps, without the help of this, you know, this sort of effort, or perhaps we could figure out that this sort of arrangement is absolutely necessary to accomplish what we need to. But if there are, you know, mechanisms in place already to address these problems, or the sorts of standards already set by the Commonwealth, then maybe it's already there and it's just so obscure that nobody knows about it, and it's just, you know, you have to dig for it, unfortunately, so, but anyway, that's, that is also out there, so I think that that should be part of the conversation as well.
Yeah, and it was interesting, the agreement is, the draft agreement we have is between, or among the second-class townships, so I wasn't sure if there was something in the first-class township code that we could look to, to provide our own sort of regulation of it.
We had talked about that before. It's a Protected Farming Act currently, and the farm lobby in Pennsylvania is extremely tough to beat, I can tell you, and this is, this has been going on, there's been a fight for, that I know of, for six years, and...
And my thought was, if they are, if they are not abiding by the standards put out by DEP, perhaps there is some kind of thing that we could do to, you know, address the issue in some way. I know that that becomes difficult, then you start going down that rabbit hole, thinking, okay, how do, does that mean that you have to constantly watch every, every field throughout the township to make sure that they're not throwing, you know, chopped-up chicken wings onto, onto, onto the field at any given moment? I don't know. Probably not, but anyway, that's, that was where I was thinking that, you know, that sort of, that sort of, you know, analysis might become useful.
And I think, too, we would always have, I would... And I think too, we would always have, I would think we would have an opportunity later on to join the lawsuit that looked like, you know, there was a need to get into it at some point to to actually be influential. And then we can revisit it there. But I like the idea of maybe getting some more information. I'm, I'm not sure. Tom, do you have a clear understanding of maybe what Vice President Karen's asks asks are here?
I understand the second part. The first part, as far as how it affects our residents, I'm not sure how to answer that. I mean, we didn't keep records of phone calls. I would hesitate to put out a poll or a survey. So I'm not really sure how to answer that. I I would actually probably turn to Commissioner Brown and say, what do you know about about this? And you can give us some scientific data on how this stuff affects the the land based on, you know, twenty acres and how much is leaching in. But other than that, I don't, I wouldn't know how to answer that question.
That that would be helpful and I'm sure Commissioner Brown will maybe forward some information on to us, right?
Sure.
That you have, I'm sure you have some. Okay. Well, that was up just for some informational purposes from the manager, so there's no action expected on that this evening.
And this next item is also informational. We, our pension attorney, Mr. Randall Rhodes, is, has retired. He is still working on a handful of clients, we being one of them, but eventually he's going to stop doing that. He has agreed and has provided an RFP for the same type of services and also sent me a list of recipients of that RFP. So I really want to just bring it to your attention that this is going on. I didn't want to get confused with the CHB solicitor that we're also looking for. That would be a little bit closer to home. The the pension attorney could be almost from anywhere because we do a lot of, most of the work we do with them is on the telephone anyway. So. And to be honest, at this point, I'm really not sure that we want to take proposals. But I'm not ready to say we're going to go and hire another pension attorney. There may, there'd be other options for advisory services which don't include, you know, an attorney, so.
Yeah, I'm familiar with some advisory companies that provide similar services without the, I guess, without the legal aspect to it, but but I didn't know the the benefit of having the legal service component involved.
I guess it was a comfort level of knowing that something was legal, you know, the, sort of the final authority. Not that I wouldn't trust advisory services, but I would want to know a little more about. I guess there's something that carries a little bit of, even though I know not every attorney knows everything, but when they, you know, when they're, there's a little bit more of a comfort level, I guess, in taking advice from an attorney than some, you know, advisory service. But there are good advisory services out there. I mean, what are they, AFI or? I forget the the acronym.
Yeah, they're just at the trade show, the trade association events often, so. But I wasn't sure if they were, if they worked in conjunction with an attorney or on their own. I just, I didn't understand the dynamics there, so.
Yeah, they may have attorneys on staff. I don't, I don't know either. So the RFPs are out there. We'll take a look at what comes in and then decide what we want to do from there.
Thank you.
The final item I have on there is we did receive our twenty twenty-three report on our feral cat colonies in the township. I've taken the spreadsheet which is provided by them and broken it down into a series of bullets to kind of give you the picture of how successful it's being without having to wade through a spreadsheet with a lot of color coding and things like that. So in nineteen, in twenty twenty-three, they registered, we had registered five new colonies, which in total sixty-three cats. Of the sixty-three, fifty-eight of them have been trapped, neutered and returned to those colonies. They, now new colonies doesn't, it could, it could mean that it's a new colony or it could mean it was just an existing colony that just is now registered. But our goal is to have somebody, a caretaker, register the colony and take care of the the animals and help trap them and things like that, so. But five new colonies were registered in twenty twenty-three. Some of our caretakers who were originally very responsive have no longer been responsive. We don't know how those particular colonies are doing. We do know that from observation that no new kittens have been born in those colonies. So the birth rate is extremely low in these colonies because we've been really successful in, in all the colonies that we have registered in trapping, neutering and returning the great majority of the cats, probably ninety-nine percent of the cats. So they're not, they're not reproducing. And in the rare circumstance when they find kittens, they take them and they rehome them before they know they're feral, I guess. Three of our colonies that had been registered have gone extinct and no longer be reported. They observed zero, zero cats in those colonies. So of the total colonies registered in township, there's twenty-nine and a hundred and eighty-one cats living in those colonies. A hundred and sixty-nine of them have been neutered and there are twelve more which are underway. In other words, they're, there are active trapping going on. Not that they have custody of the cats and they're performing the operation, but there's active trapping going on to catch those. Several of the cats have passed away. Again, no new kittens have been observed. The biggest problem in the township right now is not new births, it's abandonments. There's a lot of that going on. People are abandoning cats, whether it's cats they got during COVID and now they don't want them or whatever the reason is. Abandoning, abandonments are taking place at a, at an increasing rate. And that's something we have to figure out how to, how to work with. When it comes to working with Nobody's Cats, they're, they're very leery of getting the police involved because they don't want to scare off the caretakers. Sometimes the caretakers don't, they don't, they're, they're afraid of, you know, they're going to be, get in trouble or something like that. So getting the police involved is sort of like a last resort to them. They haven't asked for that. I've always, I've told her, I tell her repeatedly, let me know when you need us. So far, they haven't asked for that kind of help. Again, I'll list some, some of the colonies that, the larger colonies that have been registered this year. One of them's courtyard by the Marriott, has eighteen cats. And I don't know if you remember, but about a year or two ago, they had reached out to us to ask for help in reaching out to the hotels to get them to sort of help out because for some reason, there's always a cat colony near a hotel. I'm not sure what that is. Thompson Lane has thirty-two cats. I don't know, Dean, if you're familiar, you see a lot of cats on Thompson Lane, but there's a, there's a large number of ferrets out there. So to wrap it up, the zero birth rate and the extinction of several colonies indicate that our TNR program is working to reduce the feral cat colonies in the township. And our biggest problem right now is abandonments. At least we have a whole, a grip on the problem right now.
Well, thank you for that update. And I would, if the commissioners, if you haven't had the opportunity to go to Nobody's Cats here in the township, they're a really neat organization, and do some good work. It's my understanding, when I was there, that they, they just, they they bring cats from, in from all over to that, to do the surgeries and there's some volunteer veterinarians that work in there and I think the woman at that time said that it wouldn't be uncommon for like a Saturday when they're doing surgeries that they would need extra beds for the, well, not beds, but surgery tables and that they could run fifty to a hundred on a Saturday sometimes of those. So, yeah, they do a lot of good work. So, thank you. We're going to move on to commissioner reports this evening. After commissioner reports, we're going to go to executive session. The question I have for the manager, perhaps solicitor, is, I'm assuming A, which is succession planning, we wouldn't be returning for any decision, but is there an expectation that we would return after executive session, possibly for any action? On B?
I I guess possibly.
Okay. So at some point after, after commissioner reports, we'll likely recess to executive session. So we'll begin commissioner reports this evening with Mr. Sterling. Thank you. Director? Director? Ms. Greenwald?
No.
Mr. Manager, anything further?
Nothing additional.
Director Sweeney? Nothing. Director Hall? Mr. Deal? We'll start with Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few brief library updates, very quick. If you have gone to the library recently to drop off a book or just to stop in, you may have noticed that the upper parking lot was closed off. It is now reopened. There was some construction going on, but that's now open and so is the book drop off up at the upper parking lot. I also wanted to let everybody know that the blueberry sale is now open, as is the bike raffle. Those are both back and they are now ongoing, so check out the library's Facebook page and or website to, to participate if you want to buy some blueberries or buy your ticket for the bike raffle. And the book sale is also coming up very rapidly. I believe it is the nineteenth. But please confirm that yourself. My phone died, so I could not double check the date unfortunately. So I'm sorry about that. That is all. Thank you.
Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we're going into succession planning, but I did want to put a plug in for strategic planning too. I know we had talked about it in the fall and kind of were waiting for the election and then of course, getting through the holidays, I absentmindedly forgot about it and somehow realized it's now April, so I want to kind of put that back on our radar to start, start thinking about strategic planning and doing a formal session of that at some point for the board, if the board's interested. One of the other things I wanted to thank Director Davis for her assistance with the malfunctioning traffic light at State Seventeenth. It has been doing some funky things over the last week or two, the multiple lights coming on at the same time and yellow lights and green lights flashing, doing all sorts of funny things, so. Any further updates on?
I have not heard from ATS as of today, our traffic signal maintenance contractor, but I will reach out tomorrow and see if, have you noticed any?
Yeah, we're still yesterday on the way to work. The yellow and green lights come on together as the green light.
They were having issues getting the proper clearance to make the repairs, so I'm waiting. That's what I was told last week, late last week, so I will reach out to Mr. Garmin and see where they're at with that.
And then lastly, a discussion that came up in Recreation and Parks meeting, it was a discussion on smoking in the dog park and honestly, it caught me off guard in realizing that our parks are not non-smoking. And I wanted to bring that to the board for discussion and see if this is something, I mean, I won't pursue it, I want us to, to pursue it, but I wanted to get the board's thoughts on making our parks officially non-smoking. This is, you know, property that we have designated for the township for green space. It's an area that we have put playgrounds to concentrate kids. To me, it seems like a no-brainer. I think we have to make it non-smoking. I can't, can't in good conscience think that we should allow smoking in our parks.
May I comment, Commissioner? And I'll refer to the solicitor. To what degree, since Commissioner Nagy's bringing these issues up, particularly this one, of course not listed on the agenda, can we have some in-depth discussion at this point on? Because what, I mean, we may, may or may not give staff direction to give, get us information. I'm just wondering, to what degree can we discuss this?
Yeah, let's put the ideas generally and then we put on a future agenda if you want to really break down some of the elements. I guess my question would be if there is interest from the board to direct staff to them bring it forward.
I'm very interested. And I was on some of those email threads between some of the folks in the Parks and Rec. And I think there's some great ideas there. I think that they're obviously an issue. And we would not be alone in doing such, such thing. So I think, for me, I think it's just a matter of having staff, if they could get us some additional information as to what people are doing, maybe some laws that that are around that, you know, even the preemptive laws, maybe a state or county, or has, has that we would be bound by to understand a little bit more. But I I would be in favor of moving in that discussion, moving the discussion forward so that we can understand it and then perhaps make a, make a decision.
Absolutely. I think we could put it on the agenda in the future and make it.
That would be good. Super.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it this evening? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, welcome aboard Director Sweeney and also Director Noel. I think this is your first meeting as, as a director, correct? Okay. Okay, all right.
It's the first flying solo.
Yes, so, so, welcome aboard. I also wanted to just say that, that I saw with the, the county's household hazardous waste recycling event is April eleventh, from eleven to five, and then they're having the, I believe, the annual tire recycling event, May sixteenth and seventeenth. And you can get on the county, county website, Cumberland County website for more information on that. And I received some good calls this week from residents that, that had questions and some things about some zoning and fencing stuff and, and they, they called me back and, and they were very happy with the outcomes and said that everybody here was knowledgeable and, and doing a good job, so. So thanks for making everybody else look good, especially us sitting up here. Those are the, the calls that you like to get. And then I just wanted to say to all the youngsters playing baseball tonight, it's Cedar Cliff Use Baseball's opening day today. So there's a bunch of kids between the ages of four and twelve playing baseball now. And also just a reminder to everybody as you drive past, especially Hemp, the Pizza Grill, those areas, there's, there's some youngsters that are pretty excited about baseball and every once in a while, you know, just, just be cautious when you're driving tonight.
True. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice President Karen?
I just also wanted to say, welcome to Director Sweeney. And just wanted to mention that yesterday I participated in the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners Executive Committee Session where we're continuing conversations on trying to shape the future of the association in terms of rebranding and just the ultimate direction. Oh, I have my mic on, sorry. Ultimate direction of the association. And I did not get to attend Lobby Day today, but that was part of the event for the association. And I know Dean did, so hopefully he can elaborate a little bit on what the commission did today as part of Lobby Day. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. First of all, and the other captains joining us this evening, have anything to add? I'll start by also welcome again Director Sweeney. We're so glad to have you onboard and look forward to having you start to do your thing here, we'll say. I, I was recently, in fact, it was last evening, I was at a dinner and retired Commissioner Ed Black was here. And he's also on our Development Authority. And I'm very, I shared with him my excitement about your hire here and how I believe the first Development Authority meeting that you'll be attending with them, that he'll be pleased to meet you. So I look forward to you meeting Mr. Black, if you haven't already met him, and working with the Development Authority and the staff here and letting us know what's on the horizon. So thank you so much. And also Director Noel, I, I poked my head in finance a couple of times, both with Director Grove kind of on his way out. And it was, I was pleased to see, you know, the two of you working hand in hand to get the things transferred over as much as possible. And I know there's a lot of work over there that you're doing, trying to understand things and get things moving. But I'm, I'm just very confident what I, what I see back there right now. And I'm just grateful that you're here and looking forward to, to working with you and. And I'm just grateful that you're here and looking forward to, to working with you and what you have to offer the township. So thank you so much for all your work getting adjusted. Thank you. I attended the Lowerland Township Pension Committee as our liaison for the board recently. And that meeting, while Director Grove was still here and Director Noel also attended, the Township Manager, and then those other appointees on the Pension Committee were also at that meeting, one of which is a resident of the township. And then Director Hall's there and one of our police officers is there also as a representative. I believe that meeting went very well. There's a lot of good information exchanged, and I think that was excellent, that the timing, having that meeting and Director Noel was able to be there while Director Grove was still here, who knew those finances, our finances very well. And, and the firm, which is, I believe it's AndCo, they're, they're the firms, they're like our financial stewards, they're handling our investments. The, the woman, I forgot her name. Tom, do you remember? But, but she gave a really great presentation that my past experiences on the Pension Committee, and a lot of those were coming out of COVID. So a lot of our meetings in the past have been via Zoom or the, those folks have zoomed in or called in. This time, the information that was presented to us was very, very good. And I would ask that the Commissioners, if you would like to have those packages, just to come in and view them or have staff maybe make copies, there's a lot of copies. But I'm sure that they could, maybe the Finance Department could probably lend them out even to, to look at where our finances are and, and for the pensions, both the defined benefit plans and the defined contribution plans that we offer the employees here, and look at the health of them, look at the trajectories as they're looking at things into the future, but also the current and past performances of our investments for the pensions. So I, I think it was great information. They, to me, everything looks healthy. And this firm, AndCo, seems to be doing a great job for the township at this point. So if, once there's more information to report, I'm sure we'll, you know, have it and we'll report it to the board here as it comes in. Yes, I, I'm actually in the middle of the PSATC Executive Committee Conference that's going on right now. I left there and came to this meeting. And this is both our, our traditional April meeting, as well as our lobby time in which we go to Capitol Hill in an organized manner and lobby for different legislative priorities. And as I expressed in, in a past meeting, the priorities for 2024 were carryovers from the 2023 priorities because of what was going on in the legislature, pretty much in the House. Things were stagnant, not moving, so we decided at that time to kind of keep things for 2024. So amongst other things, we were lobbying with various legislators today. And there were very good discussions, both on the Senate side and the House side with our reps and senators. On radar was the big one today, as well as the, the public advertising and notices. If you've followed that in the past when I've talked about it, seemed to be a lot of reception. And it seems like that at some point, that's going to move regardless, because I think newspapers just aren't going to have newspapers in print. So I think at some point, that, that's probably going to move. And then the other issue that was coming up was the PTSI issue. And I think some of those things that we were talking about here will probably start to resolve themselves as far as how we would perceive that and what would be acceptable with all the stakeholders. That's my opinion. And I'll be happy to answer questions, you know, later on, on that with some of the discussions perhaps that I had today with some of our legislators. But I thought it was a promising day over on Capitol Hill. And as Vice President Karen said, that the association itself, the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners, is looking at a lot of things to become more important out there with regard to how, well, how people perceive us, particularly our legislator, legislature. And so we're looking at rebranding still, and that's an ongoing effort. And I believe there was some progress made over the last couple of days in moving some things forward. So I think we'll probably start to see some things there. And if you haven't already received it, you should have gotten a link through the association in some capacity to a new website in which has been put together to link off of the Pennsylvania Municipal League, who's our secretariat, their site. And that's starting to grow slowly. And we have a gentleman that's also a Commissioner in the East that's heading up that effort with regard to the website, who gave a good explanation of where we stand today. And so we're starting to see some good growth and a lot of hits on the website, which means that the exposure is going to start to happen quicker. So just an update on what's going on with PSATC. And I would imagine at some point, we would all get our invitation to register for the upcoming summit in October. The strategic planning matter that Commissioner Nagy brought up, I am in support of getting that started. My opinion on that is we have three Commissioners that were recently elected. They're in their, at the beginning of their first term, and now would probably be as good of a time as any to get that process going. And I know I've had some discussions with the manager about it. And I would just ask, Tom, if you can just kind of explain what you might have in mind of how we would even begin that process and, and your view?
The, the plan was to do it later this year, May, June kind of timeframe. If you want to do it the full, you know, the full boat, it, it's going to take more than, it, it's, we're probably looking at a couple of days, if you want to do it the right way, which at this point, the last time we did it that way, I'm not even sure what, what year it was. It was before we moved into this building. And, I mean, it's, it involves coming up with a mission statement, statement of values, goals, objectives, you know, things like that. So there's a lot of discussion that takes place. I know that there was, there's been a move in recent years to narrow the focus of strategic planning to one or two areas, which is okay, I think, on an interim basis, but at some point, since we have, you know, essentially a new board and new directors and things like that, I think it's time to go back to the beginning and say, what, what is it that we want to be? What, what do we want to do? What do we see as our mission? You know, what do we see as our objectives and things like that? So it's a couple of days. I mean, not full days, but, you know, plan on being here for lunch anyway.
So you'll give us some ideas of timeframe, maybe to start?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm looking toward the end of May, some, beginning of June, something like that. Couple of the questions are, do you, do you want to, do you want to go outside to an outside facilitator? I think the last time we did that was we, we hired a, a manager I know from the Pittsburgh area, which I think it went okay, although I, I don't think every Commissioner liked him all a lot. He spoke rather plainly. I'll tell you who it is afterwards. You might be able to guess. He's retired now. There's that question, is do we want to outsource? Do we want to just do it, you know, in-house ourselves? The other question is, is Saturday's okay? You know, I know some of you have kids and sports and things like that. Saturdays may be tough, but, you know.
Can I ask a question about that? So who all is involved and is, do we get input from the Directors and others or?
Yeah, generally, it's Commissioners and, and the Directors. You know, department heads are, are welcome and, you know, come if they like. As far as input goes, we want to be careful and don't have too many cooks, you know, spoil the broth. But certainly, that, it's, since you all are the elected representatives of the people, it's really you who are coming up with where, who we want to be, how do we want to spend our resources? And staff, Directors are here to, to tell you what's, what's possible or what they would need to accomplish that. So it's an interact, it's a very interactive process.
So, again, I guess, pointing to the solicitor, we certainly wouldn't be able to give direction to spend any money tonight to hire an outside consultant. So we're, to have that discussion is kind of moot right now. So maybe, does it sound like what we should have is on maybe a future or the next agenda, the discussion of what, give us some options of how we would proceed? And then maybe even add the dates into that agenda, like as possibilities? And then we, like the, the date picking and maybe the option of what it would look like with a consultant and the possible cost of that? And perhaps the, doing it, just, you have thirty-plus, I mean, you have a lot of experience as a Township Manager. And give us the option of what you would present, perhaps, and?
I'm going to do it the same way they would do it.
Yeah.
Just the difference is, instead of being the moderator, I would actually be able to participate in the discussion.
Right. Yeah, I would just maybe look at it that way, and then we can pick, perhaps after that meeting, we can then pick, start picking some dates. And I would just, at this point, like for, for me, my wife and I probably even tonight will go home and just start looking at our weekend calendars between May and June. Probably, I would assume at this point into July, just in case. But I would encourage that from everybody so that we make it a priority. And so I, I found the last time when I did this, that we spent a lot of time actually finding the dates that worked for all the Commissioners and, and the Directors. And I think it's important that we are all there. I would just say.
In person?
In person, yes. Yeah, that's very important. So, great. Sounds like we have somewhat of a plan to talk about at the next meeting. Great, so I brought that up and that was all, oh, no, that was it? That's all I have. So we are going to, at this time, recess to executive session to talk about succession planning and an employee pay increase, and we'll come out of executive session after we've done that.
Oh, man.
Good evening. I'm reconvening this Lower Allen Township Regular Board of Commissioners meeting of April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. The Board of Commissioners was in the executive session, and I believe there's a motion that may be presented coming out of executive session.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to increase the Human Resources Resource Coordinator's annual salary to seventy thousand dollars per year effective April eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen. I have a second from Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion or questions or any comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. At this time, our Board of Commissioners meeting-